Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 16th Planning Commission. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're here at the council chambers at City Hall in Semamish. I'll start with roll calls, starting on my right.
Roschino Farrell.
Eric Brooks.
Mark Baughman.
Larry Crandall.
Mark Lewis.
Do you need a second, Larry, to remember?
Yes.
Welcome, everyone, this evening. Commissioner Interprey said that she would not be able to make it this evening, and Commissioner Amato said he would be 10 or 15 minutes late, so he'll probably walk in and join us. All right, so next, I'd like to do approval of the agenda. Is there any comments on the agenda for this evening?
I'd like to propose a motion to switch the items on the agenda, the old business with the new business.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we reverse the order of our business items for this evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, thank you. We're going to reverse the order of those. Okay, approval of, let's move on to approval of the minutes from the December 12th meeting. If you've had a chance to review those, or if you can even remember, December 12th. Does anyone have any comments on the December 12th meeting minutes? Seeing none, we'll call the minutes from the December 12th meeting approved by common consent. Next, we have public comment. Anyone that'd like to make comments on non-agenda items? So our two items on the agenda this evening is a continuation of the discussion of the wireless code update, as well as a community development, public engagement project that we're going to get a briefing on. So if you have something you'd like to discuss other than one of those two things, now is the right time to do it. Anyone want to make non-agenda item, public comments? Okay. No non-agenda public comments for this evening. All right, so moving on then, first, we'll do our new business item, which is a briefing on a community development, public engagement project.
Great. Okay. While Jackie's pulling that up, tonight, I'm going to be, I'm going to be sharing a little bit about our new public engagement project that's currently in the early planning stages.
Miriam, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it was on my presentation that you can't see on screen. I'm Miriam Leitner. I'm the Senior Management Analyst for Community Development. We're having some technical difficulties, so I'm just going to go ahead and start. This is staff line. No. There we go. Okay. So this will be a short presentation, just to give an overview, and then an opportunity for you all to provide some input as well. So the idea for this project came from a reflection that our planning departments, really, the majority of their interaction with the community comes as part of a formal planning process. So either preparing to submit a land use application, or providing public comment on a project in the area. And we wanted to create opportunities to interact with the community on a more informal level, and share information and resources that are relevant in people's everyday lives. We saw that this model worked really well with the Urban Forest Management Plan. Our first two workshops on that related, really specifically to urban forestry, and were minimally attended from the community, but the last workshop, where we brought in one of our contracted arborists for a workshop on tree care, was standing room only. So we wanted to create more of these opportunities because they help people understand what's happening in their community, make them more aware of how to get involved, and help staff get to know the people that we serve, understand their needs, and create more responsive communication So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce everybody to Popcorn with Planning. The graphic that you see on screen is going to be used in all of our promotion materials, and was created by a Skyline High School student and City of Semamish volunteer, Queenie Nguyen. I just had to give her a special shout out because she did a really amazing job, and we're really grateful for her help. So Popcorn with Planning is going to be a monthly event. Each session will start with a short 10 to 15-minute presentation on a planning or land use-related topic, followed by about 45 minutes of open time for community members to ask questions about whatever planning and land use topics that they'd like. The location and the timing for each session is going to vary to help us reach different audiences, and I'm going to be talking a little bit more about that in a couple minutes. Staff are also looking at how to record the presentations and post them online so that people who can't attend can still access the information. We're also going to be providing coloring and activity sheets for kids, and of course, freshly made popcorn. So our plan is to post a list of potential topic options identified with your help on Connect Semamish so that people can vote for the topics that they'd be most interested in. We're also going to be using Connect Semamish to gain a better understanding of the times and days that work best for people, as well as the locations. The polls are going to be promoted through social media, the city's newsletter, and flyers in community gathering places. And then, once we finalize the schedule and topics for Popcorn with Planning, we'll be promoting each month's session in a really similar manner to that, using social media, the newsletter, and flyers as well. And we're also going to be promoting Popcorn with Planning at the farmer's market this So we're planning to host the first Popcorn with Planning session in May, after promoting it in March and April, and then the polls are going to go up on Connect Semamish in February. And again, once planning, or once Popcorn with Planning starts in May, it's scheduled to be a monthly event. So because we wanted to ensure that each session includes a lot of time for questions and conversation, we're, again, limiting topic presentations to 10 to 15 minutes. And I just wanted to note that this doesn't mean that we're not going to be discussing more complex topics like town center or neighborhood character. It just means that those types of topics are going to have their own meetings and their own workshops that are going to be outside of Popcorn with Planning. As I mentioned earlier, our plan is to post a list of potential topic options on Connect Semamish so that people can vote for the topics they are most interested in, and we'll also be providing space for people to suggest topics that we haven't thought of. To start the list, we conducted an analysis of the 416 requests that came into the city's planning department for project guidance in 2019. The most common topics that came in were subdividing property, which was 22% of the requests, addition and remodels, which was 14%, construction of new single-family residences, which was also 14%, and then various backyard improvements such as decks, pools, outdoor rooms, sheds, and landscaping, which was 12%. As Planning Commission, you're uniquely positioned to provide us with insight into what topics that you think would be a good fit for Popcorn and Planning, so we wanted to ask for your suggestions as well. Your input combined with staff suggestions are going to form the list of topics that get posted to Connect Semamish. So now I'm going to stop talking and ask for your ideas and suggestions on what topics you think might be good.
Okay. Can I go?
Go ahead.
So I had one or two. First thing that comes to mind is ADUs and the regulations with those. I think there's a lot of interest citywide about that, and in light of the new development regulations that we passed, that kind of thing. Also, I had heard from just some people in my own life talking about, and I think you touched on it as well, tree retention policy, the development of rain gardens, that type of subject. Then the other things I had, which, they may just be too big a topic, but I just thought I'd put it out there anyway because it's what I hear when I talk to my friends and they ask me, "Oh, you're on the Planning Commission. What is that?", and et cetera, et cetera. So I had subjects like, you know, what is the comprehensive plan? And how does that, and what is the Growth Management Act? I know those are enormous subjects, but I think they are topics and documents that the general public are completely unaware of, and because they affect everything that we do at a city level. The other big subject, and it was, you know, all over NPR today, and I just thought it was worth putting it out there too, as a city, you know, climate change. What is the city doing around climate change? Are we doing anything? And then, what as a result could residents do to help support that? Because apparently, according to David Attenborough, the time is now to be reacting to climate change, so I thought that was worth putting that in the hopper. And then, on a much more kind of micro level, so last year, we passed all these new development regulations, and, which I think worked terrific, but, and I'm talking to friends about it, and then they'll say to me, "Oh, so the houses that I see being built now, those regulations apply to those houses." And I think sometimes there's a big disconnect there on, when we pass regulation, what is the time lag between passing something and actually seeing it on the ground, and kind of knowing that whole process? And I think that helps citizens understand when you're going to start to see something that, you know, some new legislation that we passed. I think that's everything I had. I love the name. I love the whole popcorn thing. I think that's just fantastic, and I think it's really fun, and it may get people's attention, and hopefully, we'll get some, we'll get a lot of people in here to participate. So, that was it.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yeah, I think it's a really great idea as well. I pair it, the ADU, I think that would be a good thing, and the tree code, the removal and replanting requirements that are in place currently, I think could be beneficial. And then, I periodically mention historic preservation. I know there's, you know, some individuals in the city that are interested in what that means and what that could mean for them or their property, so having a little bit of guide sheet for that could be good. I, you know, in my own experience, and you'll probably, we'll all probably have the same type of experience, that sometimes putting things into very simple terms requires a very complex understanding of that thing, so I think it could actually turn out to be some, you know, good exercise for staff, just kind of augmenting their own understanding of what's going on as well. So, thank you.
You caught me with my mouthful. Commissioner Crandall.
The first one that comes to mind, and I'll leave it at that, is the most recent Forest Management magazine that came, talked about big trees, and the importance of big trees, because it's a little complex to, they have great value, but it's complex to make sure that they're in the right place, and now and in the future. So, that's it. And as a side note, when I first started going to movies, that's in the theaters, it was, cost me 12 cents in the popcorn five, so.
They were silent, though.
A black one.
I have one suggestion for the popcorn thing, and that, and it comes from personal experience. Dealing with the city on small construction projects, like sheds in your yard, it was a nightmarish process, and if there's a way we could give people kind of a quick tutor on how to go about doing that, and get through the hurdles, to get your permit, and all that kind of stuff, that'd be great. Good idea, thank you.
I'll jump in here and give Mr. Amato down there a chance to settle in, and then, I'll make a couple comments, and then if you have any suggestions for the Popcorn with Planning, you can jump in.
I'll take it offline.
Okay. My couple suggestions, I would actually echo Mark in saying that, how to get a permit, what the process for a permit for, focused on for homeowners, you know, residents of the city, not the big permitting process, but kind of the smaller scale. That's a question a lot of people have. Another potential topic, and these may not be earth-shattering or draw a lot of attention, but they may fit under another heading, too. So, affordable housing. It's a, it's a newsworthy topic, and I don't know how much discussion there necessarily would be, but at least to talk about what does exist in the code, and what the city has done and is doing. Kind of a higher, simpler, higher-level, simpler one, what is planning? I think many people really have no idea, you know, if I say that I am part of the Planning Commission, they've heard that term, and many people have no idea what that actually means, or what the staff do, or how that's separate from some other parts of the city. I think that, again, could be part of maybe a larger discussion. And then, you know, we talk about zoning quite a bit, R4, R6, what that means, what the various commercial zones mean, and have, I think, an assumed familiarity with that. A lot of people really have no idea what that is, but they've heard the term, and I think that could be a short piece of also a kind of a housing, or a comp plan, or something discussion as well, that might help people get the idea that then leads to what planning actually does. Those were my suggestions. Anyone else have anything else to add? Okay.
All right.
Right, setbacks would be another kind of component of what you're talking about, because that's another kind of thing. It's like, what do you mean, my property line's right here? What do you mean setback? And that might be good.
Great. Thank you all. I just wanted to close by highlighting a couple other opportunities that Planning Commission can get involved with this project. So Popcorn with Planning is a project that we're taking on in addition to our regular workload, so we'd love some help getting the word out to the community, both about the polls that are going to be up on Connect Semamish, but also about the Popcorn with Planning sessions themselves, once they start. We'd also like to have Planning Commissioners and City Council members attend Popcorn with Planning. We need to obviously ensure that we're following the required, requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act. So, once we have all the scheduled dates set for Popcorn with Planning, we'll be passing out a schedule to Planning Commission and City Councils that people can choose one or two sessions that fit with their schedules, and attend. And then, finally, as you know, this is a new approach for us, and that means that there's probably going to need to be some things that get tweaked and refined along the way, so we'd love your feedback after you attend the event, as to what you thought, but also keeping us in tune of what you're hearing from other people in the community about the event, and things that might need to change to improve it. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Miriam. Next on the agenda, a continuation of an old business item, that we're working towards a public hearing and a recommendation to the council, and that's the small cell wireless code rewrite. So Dennis, are you going to give us an update on that?
Thank you. Yeah, Dennis Osmond, Principal Planner, City. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So this evening, we're looking for action to go to hearing from February of this year. Quick recap will be the presentation tonight of how we got here, why code changed, and the intent of the code, the presentation of edits, and the summary of the material, discussion and direction, then again, looking to go to a hearing, the first meeting in February. Thanks. So how we got here. We have the public outreach that we did with the farmer's market, Connect Semamish, and a meeting with the HOA representatives. We had committees of, technical committee with providers, consultants, legal, and some other stakeholders in the area. We had our informal meeting, our informational meeting, the first time we touched base with you folks in September. First presentation of a draft code was October, and then again, in December, this touch, and then the hearing is the 6th of February, and then off to council in early 2020. And again, why we're doing this is primarily FCC rule changes, and deployment of 5G coming down the pike, but also to make sure we're compliant with state statutes, and to basically update our code and get it compliant, and deal with some conflicts within the code as well. So the flow of the code, and how we got there, sort of follows some provisions that are drafted by the FCC that we have to follow. There's the shot clock and the fees, which sets the limitation in terms of timing and cost, so how much time we have to process a permit. Small waters facilities, those are going to be probably in a batched application, the deployment will probably be multiple applications, so the batch and the FCC recognizes that. So we're going to have a larger number of applications, but we still have to comply with the shot clock and the fees. So we have limitations on the time and the fees that are collected, and so what we're trying to do is steer those to the exemption process that we've created within the code, no notice, no appeal. And then there's the non-exempt. If you don't follow that criteria within the code, then you're not exempt. It's a full code process, along with the appeal. The exemptions are the small waters facilities, as I mentioned, eligible facilities request, which is what we currently have as well. We just rolled over the TV antenna, small satellite dish for consistency, because that was in the current code, and then temporary water cell facilities as well. So the exemption, as I mentioned, is the largest number of applications. We can't stop or prohibit deployment. That's one of the key things that came out of the FCC rule. So how do we, again, navigate those deployments? And that's how we come up with the exempt process. It's an exemption for noticing, no land use permit, it's not appealable, must meet design and location. If it's not exempt, noticing, an appeal applies, and possibly a variance as well. So the code as from the last time we met with you folks in December, we did some cleanup. We kept the substantive language, as we talked about, because of the structure of how the code is put together, which I'll go over here in a minute. We incorporated the comments from the 1212 meeting, comments by the providers. At our October meeting that we have the providers, after our October meeting with PC, we got to the providers, had a meeting that lasted about two to three hours, identified 34 issues that were noted. We accepted 24 of those. Those are primarily the technical changes, height of a small cell, not using the term small cell, but small waters facility, those kinds of things. In the comments that we have received over the drafts, about 200, 200 comments that are outlined in the Excel spreadsheet, we've accepted 51 of those. And then, the origin of those edits are in the matrix of that Excel spreadsheet that's in your packet, so in the draft, you'll see a bubble, a comment, and a tie back to the Excel spreadsheet. In other words, it could be AT&amp;T 2, that means on the Excel spreadsheet, you go to AT&amp;T. On the far right, you'll see numbers listed down, comment 2, that's the corresponding comment within the Excel spreadsheet to the, to the narrative. And then, the comments we received from Planning Commission. So, one of the key ones was Note 3, we clarified that, and that's under Table A, where the onus was not on the city, but really with the permit applicant, if there's an existing land use permit that may have to be modified to accommodate a water cell. Construction notice changed to, from a notice board to a mailed letter. We talked about a door hanger, but that got changed. We clarified discussing public and private property locations in the narrative, in particular the tables, Tables B and C. And then, under 139, we had a language and illustration where no curb, garden, sidewalk, but landscaping up to the pavement, and an illustration with an amenity zone, because that was not in the illustrations of the design criteria. The other illustrations were showing curb, garden, sidewalk, so this one, we now have an illustration in there where there's just landscaping up to the pavement, and a definition of how that amenity zone works in that scenario. Additional PC revisions, 21856130, we made lighting more robust, reference the city outdoor lighting standards, and we also referenced the dark sky neighborhoods. You have to be compliant with that. We had a baffling and noise limitation distance per the existing noise ordinance. We had heard that there could, more than likely, if there was backup, power would be battery, but I went ahead and added that language because we also have the exemption provision for temporary, and I was thinking, well, a temporary cell in an emergency may not be a battery, it may be a generator. And so, went ahead and added that baffling reference. We showed the timeframe from a discussion with the Commission on, for removal of abandoned WCF, and then we also add a language that you have to put a tag on the poll, that identifies the tag poll owner and a contact number. And then, the provider comments, you know, obviously, I couldn't go through all 200, so I, I just sort of broke it down, under the 24 of the 34, if that's what I, I can't remember, 24 of the 34 that we accepted, they could basically be categorized in sort of these areas. The height issues, the antenna size, antenna, undergrounding equipment, unified enclosures, that sort of gives you a flavor of what those technical issues were. T-Mobile uses unified enclosure, so we added that. We really can't deal with underground equipment, talking with Public Works, even the FCC rule talks about that, so we modified that. We clarified antenna size to match the FCC rule, and again, small waters facility height is defined by an FCC rule. So those cleanups were really much, were tied back to what the FCC rule would require us to do anyway, so that's pretty much what we accepted. There is, we continue to have a disagreement on, and I think you, we got some additional comments later today, seem to be centered around the location criteria, variance, height on the macro, design issues, co-locating, and third-party review. And in my mind's eye, to break those out for you, to have an, to have an idea, clearly we want to be compliant with federal statutes, and not get the city sideways, and being identified as materially inhibiting or prohibiting deployment, because we can't do that, and so we took those comments. But in areas where it tries to protect, sort of what I'm hearing in terms of my involvement with this project now, and the meetings we've had, of trying to protect that neighborhood character, and clearly, of course, the providers want to try to navigate, and do the best they can in terms of representing those providers, and remove as many barriers as they can, and so those two may not necessarily match up in terms of what the city may see, want to see, in terms of aesthetics and requirements. And so, that's sort of, I think, why we continue to not necessarily have a complete meeting on, eye to eye on those. Although, I will say that I didn't get a chance to look at all the comments we did, they seem to be narrowing down quite a bit. I think this evening, from AT&amp;T, just a one little blurb, I think there's a page from T-Mobile, and Verizon has a few more, and all those Verizon comments, and just a quick overview, could pretty much fall under those provider comments that I've identified as headers up there. So the general revisions from providers and staff, so again, the technical terms and grammatic changes, the clarifications, we added six definitions to help clarify the code. They noted that under 110, it really was more design-related, and they were correct, so we moved that to 130. Same way under 110, we further, and this was also a PC comment, we clarified private property street and right-of-way under the Table B and C, which is the micro-macro and the tiering system. And then, Table C, and right-of-way, our private street, we moved that from tier 2 to tier 1. Clarified or deleted repetitive material in 130 as a cleanup, and then, the other revisions generally noted that are, that are highlighted in the comment bubbles in your draft. And so, where are we at? We started a while back here in October with an overview. We've worked through this, we've had quite a bit of discussion, quite a bit of revisions, so what I'm trying to do is capture that for you. And as I shared with you, the technical issues, we've modified that, legals helped us with that as well, and what we can accept, what we can't accept. And I think the rub has been, as we heard at the last meeting, you know, what, can we co-locate, can't we co-locate? Can we co-locate for macro, and does that affect our ability to transmit? We've heard the testimony that, well, it is, there's a sweet spot at a certain height that maybe it's not a sweet spot, but, you know, you could still maybe go down below that sweet spot and still function, it may not be at its peak performance, but you could. And so, how do we try to capture all of that and convey to you what we'd be taking to hearing? So I'm going to go back to where we started, and where we started in trying to develop this code is we looked at a three-legged stool. That stool is, consists of location, process and procedures, and aesthetics. So where? So where these can go is under Table A, and the, and the criteria, and the tiering system, under Tables B and C. Table A, those three combined, help us figure out where they can go and how they can go. Again, keeping in mind, we can't prohibit or ban, or have enough regulations in place that, that basically would, could be construed as we're prohibiting them, them being the providers. The second leg is we have a process, and we had a minor proposal, like an EFR, which is the Eligible Facilities Request, where if they're going to go and just do an antenna modification on existing macro tower, that's an EFR, okay? The medium proposal would be like the type, or the third, or fourth, or fifth generation small waters facility, that's the exemption due to the batch and the time constraints. And again, the reason we tried to navigate that, we wanted to exempt that, is the exemption is only if you're compliant with all the requirements of the code, then you're exempt from the land use provision, okay? And that's how we tried to navigate all of those facilities, all those batch applications coming in, for the, for micro, and still try and be compliant with the time constraints under the FCC ruling. And then, substantial proposal would be like a new macro. There's no exemption for, say, a new macro facility, or a larger tower. And then, last, aesthetics. Minimize impact by controlling distance and location without prohibiting deployment. We tried to address the poll, the height, design, spacing, landscaping, equipment, and all those components in there. And finally, we, we addressed attachment to an existing light standard or place, and for the city, how we tried to navigate that, is that'll go through the franchise process when it goes to council, since they're city-owned poles, council can deal with that at the time of a franchise, and make the determination yes or no for allowing attachments to a municipal And so, that's sort of the construct of the code, and how we were implementing it. And to recap from our last meeting, we really tried to keep the substantive changes intact, and not modify those, because that's sort of under, if we start changing that, that changes the, what falls into an exemption, what falls out of an exemption. We think we have a fairly tight code, especially dealing with the batched applications and the design criteria. One of the things we've heard several times, I think it came again in the Verizon comment you got today, was that an example in our design of attachments to the light standards, and one of the feedback was, the public may expect that. That's the point. I think we want the public to expect that. So those illustrations, they are for illustrative purposes, but if they're going to hook to a city light standard, I think we want them to look like that, and not look like some of the other examples we saw, and that we shared with you, where... shared with you, where it's coiled up excess wire hanging off of a pole. And so that's why staff isn't really moving on those designs, because I think that's what you're concerned about, and that's what we're trying to tackle in this code. And at the same time, still be compliant with the FCC rule. So from staff's perspective, we're pretty much there. The comments, and the reason I say pretty much, of course, if the Planning Commission gives us some direction tonight for some edits, we'll do those. And I would share with you that the edits that I received this evening, I'll take a look at those. And my general feedback is, I'll look at those in more detail, and my general feedback to you folks is that if there is a significant edit that we missed, or a conflict, or if something pops up that I float by legal and they're like, yep, you're right, you got to change that, those are the changes we would bring back for the public hearing. Other than that, staff really doesn't plan, or isn't planning on recommending additional changes, because we've sort of gone through that dance with you folks and with the providers several times. And, you know, they're representing their clients and looking to, you know, do the best they can to represent their clients. And I think, and we're trying to match what we're hearing in terms of the city's interest of the aesthetics and the deployment. And so I don't think we're, these back and forth edits, I think we've sort of reached our nirvana, if you will, in terms of the, a meeting of the minds and what that code may look like in its current form. And so we are really recommending to go to a hearing on the 6th. With that, yep, that's it. Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Dennis. I've just maybe kind of remind everyone that we, I think I specifically and others also had requested that we give a little bit more time for exactly what you're describing, to make sure that we capture as many of the comments as possible, and go through and really kind of edit the details and the language and get it cleaned up as much as possible before we would have our public hearing and move it on to a recommendation of the city council. So thank you for allowing us the additional time and for the work on this. Hope we can wrap something up that's a nice piece of an updated code that the council can consider. Anyone have any comments this evening, having had the chance to maybe take a look at what Dennis has issued, and, you know, some further comments or questions? Maybe we'll start with Josh down there at the end.
I didn't have a chance to look at this as thoroughly as I want to, wanted to. So if, please excuse me if I, it's kind of a dumb question. The diagrams, like you just mentioned, I think we're, I'm looking at the same thing that, can you hear me okay?
That's better.
Okay. Do the diagrams have any force of law at all?
Well, they're codified. And we say they're for illustrative purposes only. And the reason we did that is because we also have standards under Public Works, and those standards, I'm sure at some point are going to get modified to reflect and to match that up. And so they are aesthetic preferences with deference to the Public Works standards because of the public health, you know, public safety issue. And so it's a bit of a meld. That's generally saying, yes, we want it to look this way, but there is that caveat that I'm sharing with you in the narrative of the code, just because of issues that may occur in terms of Public Works standards and placement of those within the right-of-way. Does that make sense? So generally, yes, unless there's a problem with the Public Works standard or the conflict, then the Public Works standard is going to override.
Okay. The only thing I might suggest is that when it's actually put in the code, we have something that makes it very clear to somebody who's reading it, and it couldn't be overlooked, that this is only illustrative, and it could look different, because I think we want to make sure we continue to build trust.
I have that, but I can call that out larger if you would like.
That's what I'm, yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
I'm waiting for Dennis.
Thank you.
Trying to be polite.
Okay.
On that same note, I'm not convinced that the graphics need to be in the city code because of the difficulty of changing the code and the process. And I think they might be better served in the Public Works guidance materials. So could you explain to me why you really want them in the code specifically, considering the fast pace of change in the 5G technology and all the different types of antenna that could possibly be there?
There's sort of two prongs to the answer to that. One is, we did explore the alternative method, as you talked about, but we also, the reason we didn't is because we want to give the community, Planning Commission, and council, a sense of certainty. We didn't want it to where, well, how come staff allowed this, or why did this get permitted? Where did you, you know, where did that come from? And so if we left it out of the code, and the design was left to staff going through just some standards and not through this process, there's a sense, I think, that it could have been more staff-driven, and that may not necessarily match with what the community wants. That's what the process here is for, right? Get feedback from the commission and tell us if we're on track or not. Have the public give us input when we go to council, the same concept. And we're going to know what it is you're looking for in terms of direction, then we can apply that and follow that process. If we take that out, that sort of puts that onus on staff, and we may not hit the target in terms of what the community's after. So that was one concern. The other concern is, I wouldn't call it concern, the other issue that we're aware of, and we've chatted about this, is we fully expect whatever this commission recommends to council, whatever council passes, there's going to be a revision. We're almost certain of that, that because of the technology change, because of the court issues, because what we've been able to glean through this process is that it is an evolving technology and things are changing. I think, I even, I even think that things have changed now in terms of one provider and how they're planning on deploying 5G. But that's intuitive on my part in reading their materials and watching some of their promotional videos online, and they're a bit cryptic about it. So it's hard to really tackle that and put that into a code form. And so even if we didn't put that in code form, how would you, how do you navigate that? How do you navigate sort of what I just described? And so I think the best way is to go ahead and put it in code, and if we have to amend the code, we have to amend the code. But if we leave that too open-ended, something, and that's a loophole, something could end up in the community that the community may not want, and we may not necessarily be safeguarded to navigate that.
Okay.
Hi, oh, I was gonna, sorry. Kelly Hildy, planning manager. I also wanted to add, I echo what Dennis said. Updating the code goes through legislative review process. The same thing with the Public Works standards. So if they're, depending if it's on the code or if it's in the Public Works standards, it still needs to go through legislative review when there's an update. So it's the same amount of work, pretty much.
And to echo what Josh said, there will be some more precise wording added to the code that these are fiximiles and they may not look like.
I will do that. I'll call that out.
The second thing I wanted to ask about was, I did get a chance to cruise the 80-some-on pages of the document today, but I couldn't find specifically in there where it talked about putting the WCF on existing poles in the parks. There was an issue.
It is prohibited.
It was prohibited. So I understand the concerns of adding poles in parks, I get that. But if the pole's already there, and it contributes to the effectiveness of the signal, why would we not allow that?
So what the language is, it's not allowed right now, but we do have language in that says, much like if it's in the right-of-way, it's a franchise requirement. If it's on city property, park, or otherwise, and they want a lease agreement, that would go to council. So at that time, if council says, yeah, we'll go ahead and allow it to be on the pole through a lease agreement, it'll get navigated that way.
Okay. And then the co-location issue, so you've left the co-location open?
No.
Even though the providers were basically telling us at the last meeting that there's no way any of them would ever do that?
It's still a requirement, and it still requires that they do co-location, look at that first, in their first level, and they may not have to do that in their second level, as we go through that process. But they have to provide documentation through RF engineering that that will not work. And again, I understand what the providers are saying. They want that optimum signal, I get it. But that may be at the cost of additional poles in a neighborhood that the community may not want. At the end of the day, we recognize, and this is, when I say we, doing the work here, the FCC clearly calls out co-location and specifies that in the federal rules. So we clearly know that co-location is an industry practice. I mean, it's called out in the FCC rules. Having been given enough compelling evidence, and that may occur still, to say, hey, we can't. We've heard why, but I've not had anybody give me definitive evidence that says, Dennis, it doesn't work, and here's the study, here's the engineering, da-da-da. We could send it off and get it reviewed. So I'm really leery about just the trust us approach and don't require the co-locate, especially when co-locate's discussed in the FCC rule.
Certainly. Dennis, thank you for all your work on that. Appreciate it.
Mr. Grandal.
Thank you. Mine is more of a general overview, and it's community characteristics. That's right now kind of parked over in the city council and the planning commission. Other people are, we're not looking at it right now. But I think the word aesthetics really rings three things to me. The first one is make it the best you can on the first blush or the first sight. Secondly, I think it was mentioned, technology may change, so, okay. But the third, and to me is the most important, is the city of Samamish be a leader in trying to get aesthetics right for a sense of place here in our community.
Rashin or Eric have anything? So I noticed here that we had a definition, a page with a definition on it.
That was dropped off this evening by AT&amp;T.
Okay. Wasn't sure where that came from. So maybe we'll hear more about that in a I wanted to say thanks. I appreciate the extra time and diligence in going through this. As I said before, I hope that it allows us to have something good to forward on. I think I would point out that a lot of what we've done, and based on your suggestions, Dennis, and also what we've talked about, is anticipating the fact that it's hard to discern exactly what this will really look like. In fact, I think this is one of the interesting issues, at least in my time on the commission, that it's hard to envision what might happen, if anything. We've spent a lot of time on this, and I'm not really convinced that we have even the basic idea of what providers will actually want to deploy once they get there. So that makes it kind of interesting, but also means that we'll probably get to talk about it again in the future. All right. Anybody else have anything else on this topic? Thank you, Dennis. I appreciate it. Next, we're going to move on to public comment for this evening on these agenda items on either of the two topics. I do have one person, looks like Blakely signed in, so we'll start there. And I will remind everyone, if you want to make public comment, please state your name and address when you start, and you'll have seven minutes. So Blakely, go ahead, and then we'll just take it as it goes after that.
Okay. So work now. My name is Blakely Rickett. My address is 3206 260 Third Court, Southeast in Samamish. I'm a citizen, just representing myself tonight, but I also, at the public hearing, will be representing the HOA of Tibbetts Station and some of the other nearby residents, as well as many other citizens. And I'll be joined in person by all of those folks. So I will admit, I'm a little late to getting up to speed with all the 84 pages, but I'm doing my best, as I have personally become involved in interest in the revisions to the wireless code. What I would like to ask very much, and thank you, Dennis, for all that you've done and your work on the code, I would like to ask that a minimum distance be looked at between the macro towers. This came about from one tower that was erected over off of Beaver Lake, Isqwa, Beaver Lake Road, near one entrance of Tibbetts Station, very large macro tower. And then last, in August, June of 18, excuse me, June of 18, a second tower was proposed that, as the crow flies, would be a macro tower in the right-of-way on Duthie Hill that would be only a quarter mile away. It would then flank the second entrance to that neighborhood. So even though it's not just about the preservation of what neighborhood it's about, well, wait, I think we need to really look at this when we talk about the city's character, when we talk about fairness to the residents, and also when we look at the road project that we know is going to expand, how is that going to look when we look at adding macro towers so close to each other? Already the decimation of the trees in the existing phase of the project is so shocking and disturbing to so many of the nearby residents. We understand it's a necessity, but we really need to take this into account. The location, there's no reason why it can't be in a commercial area. When we were asking about nearby commercial property, including a very large church property that's adjacent to the proposed location, we were told by their representatives, well, that would be in King County property, and they're just too hard to work with. Samamish makes it too easy for us to get it passed. And so that was not an acceptable answer to us. These macro towers can and should be near commercial property. There should also be a minimum distance to a actual residence. In this case, there's one that was being proposed that is barely 50 feet from where children live, which is, I understand there's FCC issues regarding the defense of that, but the city should take this into account. The exemption that the towers get, I believe that they still should require notice, because I believe that residents should be alerted and given that information so that they can make proper choices for what they want to live near. I believe that the third-party review is incredibly important, because in this case, it would have come down to a completely obvious that there was no need, that it had to be a macro tower, because they, the, I'm not saying it right when I say co-location, right? It's co-location, okay. To have been able to do that with a tower that is right there, the argument for, well, we need to create this coverage in this other area, their own map showed that they had near-optimal coverage already. And then when that was pointed out, it was like, oh, well, that was just for marketing purposes. And so we really need to look at that, this whole issue of, well, 10 feet lower creates a different signal strength. That really is unacceptable when we're talking about macro towers near densely populated area of residences and being so insultingly close to another tower. I probably had some other things to say, but as I said, I'm not as prepared. I'll be more prepared when we come for the public hearing. But I really ask that this minimum distance issue be considered. And I think the aesthetics of coming through Duthie Hill, coming into the Samamish property line, entering the city, and the first thing you see is going to be, you know, ginormous towers in the right-of-way. I think that that is something that we don't want. And I think that we just need to look at, when we scale out, how we can equally balance it among the city to be able to achieve the goals and partner with all the wireless folks in order just to have a more well-balanced plan. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Blakely. And I'd really encourage you to make sure to come to our public hearing, and then also when the council considers this, it'd be great for them to hear from you as well. Those comments are really useful. I'd also, and I'm going to do this extending myself a bit here, I'd suggest maybe if you can, find the time to spend 20 minutes with Dennis, and he could probably tell you about some of the things that we have done with this code revision that address some of your comments, but not all. So that might be a good conversation if you get the chance to do it. Thank you. Mr. Stickney, welcome.
Good evening. I'll spit out the P. My name is Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. Had a couple of extemporaneous thoughts about the planning with the, you know, popcorn, and thanks for the popcorn. That was great. These are just off the top of my head, although I am somewhat involved, so these all came easy. I've got a couple of concept sections to potentially add. One would be more GMA, regional, state growth, which could include what the 14 planning goals are for the GMA and why. I think in general, people would be interested in what those are and what that means. Also, sort of a short version, a concise version of how the state and the GMA fit with the, you know, Department of, you know, Commerce, with the Puget Sound Regional Council, with King County, with our neighbors, and our own, you know, comprehensive plan, sort of how those pieces fit. Talking a little bit about how a comprehensive Talking a little bit about how a comprehensive plan needs to have external compliance with those, and then be internally compliant to carry out the goals of the plan. I think that would be interesting. And then just to explain to people how a comp plan works in sort of key parts, that it starts with a, you know, community vision, goes into goals, goes in to the policies, zoning and land use, and how, you know, development regulations carry all that out. Next set of topics, and Mary can't make it tonight, so I don't know that she'd say this, but she'd probably say, have a discussion about stormwater, and what it means, though, for the water quality in the city, and sediment transfer and streams, and how, you know, Department of Ecology, King County, and Sammamish has very robust additional requirements. Don't have to go into all the weeds of all the details, but I think people would be interested in what the city's doing on stormwater. I think another topic in this subgroup could be how the city has, you know, planned for several, you know, basins, and water quality, and fish passage, and, and, you know, restoring Cockney habitat. You know, Wally Pereira, Ken Gamblin, several people, Tom Odell, there are many folks that have been highly involved in fish, and that's a high priority for the city. I think that would be an interesting topic. I think Commissioner Crandall talked about the size of trees, I totally agree. And at a couple of meetings, it might be interested to talk about, one meeting about the tree retention ordinance, how it was for many years, how it evolved, and what it means publicly, and, you know, I'll spit out the P privately. But also at a second meeting, or another meeting, I should say, maybe urban forestry plan, and tree canopy, and goals, and all the benefits of the whole. And I remember one thing the consultant said that stuck with me during all those meetings, he said, "Sammamish is a city in the trees." So it's not like cities that are trying to have some trees, it's a city in trees. It was just kind of an interesting topic. Last thing, or a few odds and ends. I think a topic potentially, not to create something contentious, but to lay down ground, level-setting. What currently are the roles of schools within a community from the school district perspective and from the city perspective, and how do those things merge, and where may the city want to go? I think that's a, sort of a hot topic out there on social media, and having some information to level-set on that would be good. Same thing goes for, again, not to be contentious, but just to talk about the topics and what they mean. How does transportation work, and concurrency, and supporting land uses in comp plans, and safety of roads, and what do we as a community have control over, and what don't we have control over with our regional, you know, jurisdiction, transits? I just noticed something on the Fair and Peers website, I was doing some homework, well, I won't go into the long story. I was doing some homework, and they had a very interesting discussion about a Senate bill in California. And I didn't know this, California is taking a whole different approach statewide on transportation. No longer about driver experience, it's about reduction of car trips. Extremely interesting. If you get a chance to go to the Fair and Peers website, California Senate Bill, something or other, is taking a whole nother approach for the whole state. And last year, at a transportation, and this is just a small aside, I'm almost done with the topics, this is not a topic, this is just more chat. I went to a meeting on, in Mercer Island, on the region, on transportation. Sound transit was there, the state was there, metro was there, several people were there, and they all echoed the same thing. You can't build your way out, you have to manage your way out. So that was just an interesting conversation. Anyway, I got sidetracked, I'll get back on track. Could be good to talk about how the 2015 comp plan introduced sustainability concepts throughout the entire comp plan, and the goal of how to build good, sustainable, and holistic systems over time, and how everything ties together, and the, and the relationships. A lot of times, people get caught up in the here and now, and that's easy to do, but what's the long-term perspective? I've been doing a fair amount of study into the seven, you know, generation concept, and that's not that there are seven generations alive in a community, but Iroquois Indians in New York had a federation, I'm not sure that's the right term, of tribes that lasted for hundreds and hundreds of years before white men came to the US. And they had a wonderful system that worked things out, if you have a chance, do some homework on that. But one of their goals was to plan their decisions on seven generations into the future. I think that's a good goal, too. So anyway, those are some, you know, potential topics, and a little ad-lib chat about planning.
Thank you, Paul. We'll set up a little fire here for next time, so it can be a fireside chat with Paul. All right. Anyone else that would like to make a public comment this evening on our agenda items?
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Gregory Bush. I'm here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T, and my office is in Isiqua, Washington. It's 1420 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, Suite 9030, and ZIP Code 98027. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the agenda item. AT&amp;T is committed to helping develop workable code that allows all providers to develop their network in harmony with local community needs and desires. With that in mind, I'd like to draw your attention to five areas of the draft code that do not allow AT&amp;T's facilities to operate as they're designed, or the areas are consistent with how other communities have addressed wireless development with a similar idea in mind. So, the five areas are flush mounting of antennas on Page 69, the missing category of small wireless facilities locations on Table C on Page 63, disqualification for Tier 2 small wireless facilities within a thousand-foot radius, and the fourth item is noise standards, consistency with language in regards to other noise standards regulations, and finally, the piece of paper I handed out defining the amenity zone, a proposed definition. So I think I'll start with the paper, since that's the item in front of you. I remember at the last commission meeting, this was an item of discussion, as you wisely brought up, the amenity zone, there are a lot of areas in Sammamish that do not have pavements or sidewalks up to the edge of private property. And this is a definition that hopes to encapsulate all that, and keeps in mind that in some locations, it would not be wise to define the amenity zone as three feet back from the concrete pavement, and in some places, the existing poles, if we're going to redefine the amenity zone, hopefully, a carrier would be able to deploy on an area that, without having to relocate a pole, simply because it doesn't technically fall within the amenity zone, it would have to ideally work in harmony with the existing environment, without having to redesign the entire way the poles are laid out. So that's for your consideration, and I have given Dennis a copy as well. So, the first, the second item I'd like to address is the canister antenna that AT&amp;T prefers to use. This is on the Page 69 of tonight's packets. AT&amp;T has provided suggested language, simply specifying that if there's no technically feasible way to flush mount the antennas, then for canister antennas, we would be able to put it 12 inches off of the pole. This is 12 inches from the outside of the pole to the inside of the canister antenna. And compared to Page 73, as you mentioned in the pictures, if you look at Page 73, the canister antenna is right up against the side of the utility pole. This doesn't allow the canister antenna to work as function, because the signals will bounce right off the pole and cause interference. So in order to function properly, it has to be a 12-inch standoff. So it would very much work if, in the code, this was a defined area, and the standard language adopted by the majority of municipalities in Western Washington takes this into consideration. Third item I'd like to discuss is the quick item. On Table 3, you notice that some of the items have been moved from Type 1 to Type 2. This is intentional, I'm sure, but there's an item where, since we're moving the poles or property owned by HOAs, this creates a gap in the code when we're moving from Type 1 to Type 2. Right now, there's a gap. If a carrier wants to apply for an existing pole on private property, there's no clearly defined way to, it doesn't fit Type 1 or Type 2, it's ambiguous. So that's something to address going forward. Existing or replacement pole is not otherwise exempt, would be a category to add under Type 1. The fourth item is the 1,000-foot radius for disqualification under Type 2 for small wireless facilities. This is, I agree with the letter submitted by my colleagues at Verizon. This is, originally, the draft code suggested 150-foot disqualification radius, and this is similar to Isiqua's code. This language was originally taken from a similar system in Isiqua, and it was later raised to 1,000 feet. As pointed out by a letter on behalf of Verizon, that 1,000 feet is the maximum range that a small wireless facility can project. This is in ideal situations where there's nothing blocking it, no trees, and I'm pretty sure it was tested in a lab. In reality, it's much, it's much smaller radius, so potentially, if a carrier had to disqualify a site 1,000 feet away, it would be completely unable to meet that, because it would be in a totally different environment, it wouldn't be able to project through trees, buildings, or things like that. So Isiqua considers that in its 150-foot radius. And finally, the noise standards on Page 79 and 80 of the packet, it's the last few lines of Page 79. This is new language that we've seen. The standard practice to regulate noise is to use the same language as other areas of city noise ordinances, or to simply cite to the WAC. And the unusual parts of this code are audible and eliminate noise, so all audible noise greater than 75 feet away must be eliminated. That would, if you read it literally, that would have to be brought down to zero, and that's not consistent with other noise regulation. An alternative language would be, if sound levels exceed those permitted under Chapter 8.15 or WAC 17360, then applicant shall incorporate mitigation or baffling into design as the code is outlined. So those are the items that are inconsistent with other regulations or items that would definitely prohibit AT&amp;T from using its preferred equipment. And of course, I'm available to answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Greg, and for participating in this conversation. Anyone else like to make a public comment? Go ahead.
My name is Gregor Gadbaugh with Verizon Wireless, 3245 158th Avenue Southeast in Bellevue, Washington. I'd just like to say I appreciate the time here this evening with the Planning Commission, as well as the efforts on the staff to work through the code. One of the things I wanted to expound upon, as far as what Greg identified, as far as the small cell radius, especially when it comes to 5G and millimeter wave, it's very short distance. So if having a standoff of 1,600 to 1,000 feet just wouldn't be enough, which is why in our comments, we made a reference to 200 feet, because the range of the millimeter wave, it's, you know, it's a significantly bigger tunnel as far as the throughput, but it's a much shorter range. So we want to make sure that we have the right kind of coverage with the distance between each, within each node. Regarding the graphics in the code, just kind of put some clarification on that. Although they represent what one might look like, our concern was just the equipment size and the location as far as the equipment. I mean, it shows equipment a lot lower on the poles, or a lot lower on the light standards. You know, the size of the cabinet, it gives an image of it being significantly bigger than what we would more likely deploy. So that's kind of our concern as far as the graphics showing up in the code. And then as far as the co-location, one thing to be aware of is that PSE will not allow us to co-locate with another carrier. So if there's a T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, or even us, they can't co-locate on the same pole as we do. So that is one of the reasons, in addition to why co-location could be an issue for us. So that's all I have for this evening, and if there's any further questions, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to make public comment this evening? All right. Thank you to everyone who commented, and I encourage you, of course, to be here when we have our public hearing on February 6th, and likely wrap this up and hopefully send it off to the city council. All right. Kelly, anything else for this evening from you?
No.
All right. I have one thing I want to mention. This evening is the last participated meeting by Commissioner Rochino Farrell, and potentially the last meeting by Commissioner Rick Brooks, and I'd like to, myself, say thank you very much. Both of you have been on the commission since I joined, and I want to express how much I appreciate your efforts and your partnership and your work on the commission, so thank you very much.
Can I say a few words?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say what a pleasure it's been for the last three years, and I shall really miss the Planning Commission. My intention when I came on Planning Commission was to do two things, was to learn and to contribute, and I know I certainly have done the former, and I did my very best to do the latter. I just wanted to thank all of the staff that have gotten to know after, over the last three years. You are an incredible team, every single one of you. Your level of professionalism and knowledge has blown me away every time, so thank you so very much. I've learned so much from you, so thank you, it's been a great experience. And then I just wanted to thank my fellow commissioners. It's been a joy getting to know all of you, and to the other commissioners that have served on the other makeup of the commission. It's just been one of the most greatest experiences I've had. I want to wish you well with all the important work you're going to do for 2020 and beyond. And as Paul said, think about the seven generations, and think about the life of the city. And the life of the city is not just, will not just span in our lifetime, it will span beyond that. I come from a city that's over 1,000 years old, so a city doesn't last as long as we're alive, it'll go beyond us, and what do we want for our city, and what do we want it to look like? And I think all you guys are the type of people who can really contribute to that, and it's my pleasure to know you. So thank you.
Any other comments this evening?
I would like to thank you both. I've been on the commission now a year, Josh and I came on last year, and you were both very welcoming and very engaging, and what I really appreciated is the communication of the group. We don't always agree, but I've never heard an unsole word, I've never heard an argument. It's been a really great experience, and I wish you were both staying, so.
Maybe I'll need to start an argument here one of these nights.
Not on TV.
Okay. All right. My final comment is, oh, and Miriam's gone, popcorn with planning. When you watch the film and see all of us crunching popcorn up here, you might reconsider allowing the people at the dais to have popcorn. And I've been digging popcorn out of my teeth the whole time, too. All right, I think that's it for this evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Second? It's been moved in second, that we adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you, we're adjourned for this evening.